Okay, great. So we'll hear our first briefing from our new demographer, Ms. Valencia, the 2020 census findings for Austin.
And I'll tee this up, Councilmember, thank you. The U.S. Census Bureau recently released the redistricting data set which provides communities with the official 2020 census counts for their counties, cities, and neighborhoods. As expected, Austin's official census counts affirm significant growth within our city, which is also accompanied by similar growth in our regional cities and counties. Today, our city demographer, Lila Valencia, will present key 2020 census information and comparative data for population, housing unit counts, and racial and ethnic diversity. Lila's presentation also includes valuable geographic mapping data showing the shifting patterns of growth and population migration in our city. And now I'll turn the presentation over to Lila Valencia. Welcome.
Morning. Thank you, City Manager Krung. Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Lila Valencia. Thank you for allowing me some time to share with you findings from the 2020 census data. The data included in the presentation, as City Manager Krung stated, are from the Census Bureau's release of the Public Law 94-171 file, or what's called the redistricting file. These data were made available August 12, and they provide communities the first look of their official 2020 census counts down to the block level. The data included include total population, total housing unit counts, population by race and ethnicity, and population residing in group quarters such as college dormitories and nursing homes. So I'll briefly, if we can go to the next slide, or can I control this, or will somebody forward this for me? Okay, perfect. Thank you. I'll briefly cover population growth in Austin throughout the last decade, describe Austin's unique diversity, dive into areas of the city to explore growth and declines in population, and then I'll recap some findings focusing on areas to celebrate, as well as some areas that may require more time for reflection and contemplation. So let me go ahead and get started. We'll first talk about Austin's population growth on the next slide. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, the latest census data reveal continued growth for the city of Austin. The city has been doubling its population about every 20 to 25 years. So for instance, here you'll see, in 1970, we were at about a quarter million population in Austin, and then between 1990 and 2000, we surpassed that half million mark. And now, in 2020, we are just shy of the 1 million mark at 961,855 people. Next slide, please. The city of Austin remains the 11th largest city in the country, but its growth is rivaling that of the very largest cities in the nation. Austin added more population than most cities. We added 171,000 people in the last decade, and only New York, Houston, and Fort Worth added more people than the city of Austin between 2010 and 2020. Next slide, please. Here, we take a look at the regional growth in the Austin metro area. Among metros with populations of over 1 million, the Austin metro was the fastest-growing metro every single year this decade. While Austin grew at a rate of about 21.7%, the metro area grew even faster, at 33%, and added over half a million people throughout the decade. Austin contributed about 30% of that total growth, and with Hayes County as the third fastest, and Williamson County as the 11th fastest among the nation's most rapidly-growing counties, it's clear that our region is growing, and it's growing rapidly. Next slide, please. And when we look at our surrounding cities, we see a similar pattern. As for as fast as Austin is growing, the surrounding cities are growing even faster. A number of central Texas cities have taken that number-one spot among recent lists of the fastest or fastest-growing cities in the country, including Leander and Cedar Park. And also growing really rapidly are Maynor, and Buta, and Hutto. It's important to note, though, that although Austin's share of the metro growth is smaller today than it has been in the past, and that the surrounding areas are growing much faster than Austin, the bulk of the growth still originates in the city. Its largest neighbor to the north, Round Rock, added a tenth of the population that Austin added this decade. And even the large increase that we saw in Leander is only two-tenths of the growth seen in Austin. Next slide, please. And as population has grown here in the city, so has the number of housing units. In 2020, there were 444,426 housing units in Austin, and we expanded by over 90,000 since 2010 at a rate of growth of about 25.5%. While the number of housing units is larger than in decades past, the rate of growth has slowed down this decade. It's also important to consider that these data do not include any other information on housing types, or number of bedrooms, or other housing characteristics that could further inform how well the housing stock matches the housing needs of the population. So let's go ahead and go to the next slide, and we're going to shift gears and talk a little bit more about that population. Next slide, please. So, the city's population growth extended across all race/ethnicity groups. And first, let me give you a little bit of context. So throughout the country and the state, population growth was driven largely by populations of color. And so, for instance, in Texas, 95% of the total population growth in the last decade can be attributed to populations of color. In Austin, we see somewhat of a unique pattern of diversity. And so, I realize there's a lot of numbers in this table, but I'm going to guide you through them. So let's start at the bottom right corner, where we can see the biggest drivers of growth. The non-Hispanic white population is driving growth in Austin. They contributed nearly 40% of all growth this last decade, expanding by over 67,000 to a total population of 452,994 persons. And this is at a time when the country experienced a decline for the first time in 230 years in the number of people identifying as non-Hispanic white. So seeing such strong growth among this community in Austin is unique. Now, let's move to the column to the left to see the fastest-growing race groups. The fastest-growing race/ethnicity group was the group that said, "There's no race that's listed here by the Census Bureau that represents me," or the some other race group. And they grew by over 3,000 and more than quadrupled in size between 2010 and 2020. Another fast-growing race/ethnicity group was the multiracial, or two or more races, group. And both of these groups, some of that growth can be attributed to some changes that the Census Bureau made in the way that they code the data, and the response choices that they made available to people when they were responding to the survey. But these groups were also already fast-growing groups in the past. The Asian population was the fastest single-race group. Over one in five people added to the population of Austin were of Asian descent, and they contributed over 21% of the total population growth. Hispanics made up about 20% of the total growth in the city in the last decade, and this compares with about 50% at the national and state levels. Hispanic residents grew by over 34,000 people to a total population of 312,448 persons. The African-American population also grew this decade, but at a slower rate. Black residents grew by over 5,200 to a total population of 66,200 persons this decade. This is, in the context, a strong migration by African-Americans to cities in the South, including Dallas and Houston. And so, for instance, similarly-sized Fort Worth added nearly 40,000 African-Americans and over 67,000 Hispanics this decade. If we can go to the next slide, please. This slide here is a visual representation of our city's diversity. And so, although no race/ethnicity group makes up a majority, the non-Hispanic white population continues to make the largest share of the population. And they are now at 47%, which is a slight drop from nearly 49% in 2010. The Hispanic population also saw a decrease in its share from 2010. They dropped about three percentage points from about 35% to 32.5%. The Asian population is now the third-largest race/ethnicity group in the city, and it makes up nearly 9%, up from 6% in 2010. And the black population now makes up 7% of our city's population, which is about a one-percentage point lower than at the start of the decade. Next slide, please. The redistricting data also provide information on the population 18 and older. And so, when we subtract this from the total population, we're able to see that voting-age population, but we're also able to see the child population. And in Austin, the adult population consists about 775,000 people, and the child population totals about 186,000. The adult population is less diverse than the overall population, and it's a little less diverse than it was a decade ago as well. While no group holds a majority in the total population, as I described before, in the 18 and older, just over 50% identify as non-Hispanic white, and this is compared to about 42.5% in 2010. The child population is much more diverse, with 67% identifying as non-Hispanic white, with the Latino population being, I'm sorry, not as non-Hispanic white, but as non-white, and with the Latino population being the largest group, making up about 44%. On the next slide, you'll see that the growth in the child population was driven by Asian, non-Hispanic white, and multiracial children. Next slide, please. You can also see here that there was a drop in the number of Latino and African-American children between 2010 and 2020. And we typically look at the child population to try to understand what the demographic future of an area may look like. And in this case, we see fewer African-American and Hispanic children, and perhaps fewer Latino and black adults in Austin's future. Next slide, please. So now, we'll dive into particular areas of growth and decline. And so, the map on the left depicts the population density, and darker shaded areas have higher density. Population density in the city has increased from about 26,000 persons per square mile in 2010 to over 3,000 persons per square mile in 2020. The most densely populated tracts can be found around the University of Texas and in downtown Austin, just north of the river, as well as along the I-35 corridor from Techridge down through St. John's, Central East Austin, Riverside, and then down to Onion Creek. The map on the right depicts population change between 2010 and 2020, with growth in areas in white and blue, and decline in areas in red. For the most part, tracts around the city added more population, and high growth can be seen in areas in the Mueller area, the Domain, West Campus, and Northwest Austin. Areas of the city that lost population throughout the decade can be seen in the flood mitigation area of Lower Onion Creek, also in the Dove Springs area, St. John's, North Lamar areas, and then also the tract that houses the University of Texas at Austin. Next slide, please. And so, when we first take a look at these maps, it definitely gives an impression of sprawl, right? And so, some of this has to do with the nature of the geographic areas that we're representing here in the maps. Census tracts, especially the ones that lie on the outskirts of cities and in more rural areas, tend to be larger in land area, and so they tend to stand out in some of these maps. In actuality, the population distribution is much closer to the city limits, but, you know, there is some sprawl that's taking place, as it has been for some time now, and in most urban centers around the country, especially in urban centers here in Texas. Next slide, please. So here, you'll see, however, that a larger share of the metro growth that's taking place in Austin relative to other principal cities and other metro areas. So while Austin contributed 30% of the total growth in the metro region in the last decade, San Antonio, and Houston, and Dallas contributed 26, 18, and 8% respectively to their metro regions. So we see that in Austin, or in the Austin metro, the bulk of the population growth in the region continues to originate within the Austin city limits. Next slide, please. So in this next set of slides, what I'm going to show is a couple of maps, and they're each going to have the geographic distribution of a different race/ethnicity group. And this is the geographic distribution for the Asian population. So the map on the left looks at the Asian share of the population, with higher shares depicted in increasingly darker shades of green. And tracts with higher shares of Asian population can be seen in the northwest part of Austin, stretching from Jolleville to Avery Ranch and down to Spice Wood, Mansfield, and River Place. And then, tracts with higher shares of the Asian population can also be seen in parts of southwest Austin, around Barton Creek and West Oak Hill, and in the northeast areas around Harris Branch and Pioneer Crossing. Now, the map on the right depicts population change in the Asian population between 2010 and 2020, and growth is shown in green, and decline is shown in areas of brown. Growth in the Asian population can be seen mostly in the northwest and northeast, and then also some southwest parts of the city, as well as in the Domain, the university area. And then, some areas of decline in the Asian population can be found around the Riverside area, south of Techridge in the northeast, and then around the Schofield Farms and Lamp Light Village area in the northern part of the city. Next slide, please. This set of maps focuses on the geographic distribution of the black population. And so, again, the map on the left looks at the share of the black population, with higher shares shown in increasingly darker shades of purple. And areas of the city with highest shares of black population can be found in parts of MLK and Highway 183, as well as in parts of north Austin, including the areas of Techridge, Pioneer Crossing, and Harris Branch. And then, the map on the right looks at change. So areas in green are showing growth in the African-American population, and areas in purple are showing decline. Areas of African-American growth can be seen in parts of Harris Branch and Techridge in the northeast parts of Austin, and down in far-south Austin. And then, areas with the steepest declines in the black population can be found in tracts located in historic East Austin and east of MLK and Highway 183. Next map, please, or next slide? And this set of maps looks at the Hispanic geographic distribution. So, the darker shaded areas are going to show higher shares of Hispanic population. And so, what we can see here is that areas with higher shares can be found in the eastern parts of the city, especially the parts southeast Austin, like Knuckles Crossing, and Metropolis, and along 130. And then, other areas with high shares include the St. John's and North Lamar area, as well as along North Desa. And then, in the south, we see higher shares of Hispanics around the St. Edwards University, as well as South First. And then, there's a number of census tracts with smaller shares of Hispanic population, particularly in historic Central East Austin. And then, the map on the right depicts population change for Hispanics, with red areas showing growth, and then the black and gray areas showing decline. Tracts with higher growth among Hispanics can be seen in the northeast and southeast areas of the city, extending what we once called the Eastern Crescent farther east. And then, areas with declines in the Hispanic population can be seen in the central parts of the city, stretching from the North Lamar region down to historic East Austin, and then farther down to Dove Springs. Next slide, please. And then, this set of maps, this is this last set of maps, and it's for the non-Hispanic white population geographic distribution. Again, the map on the left looks at the higher shares of the non-Hispanic white population in darker shades of blue. And the map depicts a familiar pattern of areas of higher shares of white population, found mostly on the western parts of the city. We also see many tracts, though, with higher shares of white population along the central corridor and to the east of I-35, particularly from University Hills all the way down to To Go Valley. And then, the map on the right depicts change in the non-Hispanic white population between 2010 and 2020. And so, the areas of growth are going to be in the, in blue, and then the areas of decline are going to be in shades of brown. And areas of non-Hispanic white population growth can be seen in the Lakeline, Domain, Mueller, and Holly neighborhoods, as well as north and south of the river in the downtown areas. And then, areas of non-Hispanic white population decline can be seen in a number of tracts in Northwest Austin, including Avery Ranch, and also in the tract that houses the University of Texas and parts of West Campus. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. You can skip over this slide. Thank you. So, just to recap, the findings that we see here offer us many opportunities to celebrate. Our city continues to grow, and its growth is rivaling that of the nation's largest cities. Growth in housing appears to be on par with population growth, with low vacancy rates indicating absorption of new housing units as they're being added. And then, we saw growth among all of our race and ethnicity communities, and this is yielding increased diversity for our city. Next slide? Thank you. However, the data also provide some opportunities for reflection. There's a continued geographic segregation among our city's different racial communities. There also is a concurrent farther eastward movement of the population, with increasingly higher shares of the non-Hispanic white population in historically black and brown neighborhoods. Additionally, our housing rate of growth has slowed down between 2010 and 2020. Given the city's long trends of strong and sustained growth, it's imperative that housing growth is able to continue to keep pace with population growth. And then, populations of color led growth throughout the country and the state. We see a unique pattern of growth among Hispanics and African-Americans in Austin, including a decline among black and Latino children. And this is something we should be curious about. In order for all of our communities in the city to be able to fully participate in the celebration of these results, we must first seek to understand what is it that's contributing to this unique diversity in our city. Next slide, please. In this slide, I just provide a number of resources, including an interactive map series that we have on our website, the static maps that I shared with you here, and then we also have a dashboard with key findings. I also shared some links to the Census Bureau's. They have some interesting blogs and data visualizations. And then, the Texas Demographic Center, they have provided some interactive dashboards for all cities and all counties in Texas. So feel free to, you know, look through those, and I think you'll find that information helpful. And that's the end of my prepared comments. I'm happy to answer any questions if time allows. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Valencia. We'll now entertain some questions. I did have an opportunity last week to meet with Ms. Valencia with my staff, and I'd highly encourage my colleagues to take advantage of that opportunity, you know, to dig more into the data. Now that you have seen it, I may be doing that again. It was really helpful to be able to kind of play around in the maps and see there's some really great resources that her team has put together. And, you know, some of those questions and things, after you've had a chance to look at that data, we may be able to have sort of richer conversations. So I will open it up to some questions. I just want to be mindful of time today. We have an enormous amount on our agenda. Councilmember Fuentes?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Valencia, for today's presentation. You know, oftentimes, I know a lot of us were expecting to see from the census count that Austin reached 1 million residents, and we know that part of the reason why the numbers don't reflect that is because there's likely an undercount, given that we're in a pandemic, and because of the then-administration's attempts to suppress data collection and use tactics that made it harder for folks to want to participate in the census. But I also think there's another area that we often don't talk about, in that while Austin is a growing city, we're also experiencing a displacement crisis. And I think we're seeing that in the numbers. While we did add 34,000 Latinos to the Austin area, our portion as a Latino community has decreased. And from my understanding and looking at another data set, the percentage of Latinos, and I think I have one of the highest Latino districts in the city, that was traditionally at a little over 70% Latino 10 years ago, we, District 2, experienced a 10% decline in our Latino population. And that is not okay. And so, what I would like to hear from you, and from your experience and analysis with this data set from the Census, to what extent is displacement shown in the data? How prevalent is it compared to other cities, our size, and any other factors that we should be considering? And I appreciate that you show that our minority communities, or communities of color, are moving further east, given the affordability crisis that we have in the city. But, you know, you mentioned that the children, the percent of black and Latino children in Austin is decreasing. So if you wouldn't mind just touching on, you know, to what considerations should we give to the displacement crisis that we're experiencing in Austin?
Sure. So the data are definitely indicating, you know, some of that displacement phenomenon. And, you know, as you mentioned, we see that farther eastward movement of communities of color, in particular African-Americans and Hispanics. And then, one of the things that we're seeing is that we are seeing areas where we may have expected growth, that there could be some population declines. And typically, these were in areas where there were higher concentrations of Hispanics families. So in the Coronado Hills, and St. John's neighborhoods, and Dove Springs. And so, what we think may be happening there is that as the displacement occurs, then the people who move into those areas have a different makeup of family and household size than the families that were there previously. And so, one of the things that we need to start to look at when the data become available, this is, you know, an initial set, but we do need to start to disentangle, how much of this is displacement, where people are moving farther and farther east, or moving out of the city altogether? And then, also, how much of this is an undercount, right? When I saw those figures for the declines in black and brown children, right away, I was like, "Well, this is in line with, you know, the discussions around displacement and families not being able to afford to live in Austin." But I also remember that these populations, especially for children under five and children of color, are the most likely to be undercounted. And so, we need to start to disentangle those, you know, that information, so we can get a clearer understanding of truly what is happening in the city, and where we need to further explore areas, you know, where we need to amplify our mitigation displacement efforts, but also areas where we need to explore with the school district, with other school districts, to understand, what is the school enrollment like? And are we seeing a true decrease in the child population, or is something else happening here?
Thank you. That was super helpful, and I think you're spot on with the untangling of the data, given the circumstances under which the census was held. And colleagues, you know, displacement prevention is one of my office's top priorities, especially for our community, and I look forward to our continued work on the displacement prevention front, and my office will be bringing forward policy later in October around this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fuentes. Hi, Councilmember Kassar.
Thank you for your comments there, Councilmember Fuentes. And I think what we may find is that we can't distinguish between, in this census data, how much displacement there was versus how much intimidation of low-income families there were. But we know that there were both, and what you've raised is that we should absolutely address both. One interesting thing for us, that popped out to me in this data, was how in the Heritage Hill census tract, there was this really significant growth of Latino families in my district. And in the last 10 years, a lot of the commercial lots around the Walmart there have become affordable housing, enabled and supported by this dais, where hundreds and hundreds of affordable housing units were added there. In other parts of my district where there wasn't new affordable housing added, and we've been working to preserve it, we saw some of the declines. And my anecdotal sense is, some of that has to do with the intimidation between 2010 and 2020 data, and some of it has to do with what you've laid out here, where children have grown up, they've left the household, parents or tios and dias are still there, but their children no longer can afford to live there, and they're not living with their parents. And again, that speaks to that continued need to preserve our housing, and then add that new affordable housing, where before we had parking lots or commercial strip centers. We've seen in some of those census tracts in my district, where we saw displacement and gentrification, we also saw some addition, where we went and did that key work in the last decade. So again, I think your points are spot on, Councilmember Fuentes, where we have to address both. We have to make sure people feel included and safe, and we have to address the displacement we've seen, because, again, many of our districts, my district, I think, had second-most Latinos in the past, and second-most black residents, except for, you know, second to District 1. And we saw that really steep decline in the black population, or in the relative black population in District 4. So even if we're seeing increases in the number of Latinos and the number of Black Austinites, I think it's really important for us to be able to keep families here and keep. And I think you can look at the map and see how when we add affordable housing, it works. So I think our commitment over the next decade, looking at this data, is to provide that feeling of safety, that you are, that you're included in this community, and also preserve and add affordable housing. Because I think when you look at the map, you can see that where we did that well, we didn't see those declines.
Councilmember Renteria, do you have your hand up? Go ahead.
Yes. And this is a prime example of what our failure not to build affordable housing, and, you know, we could go and look at Housing Works scoreboard card and see that we have some districts that have zero, zero affordable housing. And that's going to be a problem. I mean, when land value gets to be $400,000 to $500,000 just for a lot, you cannot build single-family housing, especially affordable single-family housing. It's just so expensive. And unless we really hammer down and start accepting these kind of developments that come into each of our districts, we're going to continue that path. We've been shouting this out for the last 20 years, and it's just false and deaf ears. In fact, when we just got on the Gen 1, we started really investing in housing. Before then, we set aside one or two, the previous council set aside one or two million dollars for tax credit coverage, and that was it, besides the federal fund that came down. And so unless we really start getting, and I see this, you know, but I can see the areas where the districts that don't have affordable housing, where we're trying to really focus on, you know, and it's just a slow process. We're going to need a lot of help from the rest of the businesses around here. People, if you don't get off and start supporting this, building more density in downtown, especially affordable housing, you're going to lose your workers. And your workforce is leaving Austin. That's what they're going, they're going out to Del Valley, they're going out to Hayes County, they're going to Georgetown, Williamson County. They just cannot afford to live here. It's just so darn expensive, you know? And where it's really getting to that point where we're going to start losing a lot more if we don't get really serious about building more affordable housing. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I want to thank you for, you know, bringing this forward. And thank you, Councilmember Renteria, for raising the opportunity for our businesses to be part of the solution in providing affordable housing. I do want to underscore that the data that we have at this point in time is very incomplete. And when we get the fuller dataset, we'll be able to do a lot more analysis that will give us more information about how our policies are working and how they're not. You know, we will be able to better see things like unit sizes and whether unit sizes are impacting the choices that families are making, whether we are creating situations where you have a lot of single people moving into areas that were previously families. And I think that level of data, to the extent that we'll be able to dive into that, I think will be really helpful. But I think that's still quite a ways away. So I'm looking forward to that. Councilmember Towa.
I like, thank you for that suggestion, Councilmember Alter. I think it would also be useful to see that data alongside some of the information from the Housing Works scorecards, which shows district-by-district creation of affordable housing. It is, I appreciate colleagues, all of your comments, and look forward to supporting anti-displacement policy efforts, Councilmember Fuentes, and hope to have an opportunity to work with you on that if you're still looking for cosponsors. I do think it's really important, Councilmember Renteria, share your passion for affordable housing and want to see affordable housing in all parts of our city and increased investments. I just do want to acknowledge, though, that both past councils and past voters have supported affordable housing bond packages. In, you know, the city of Austin was, I believe, the first city in the nation to have an affordable housing bond package. And so, you know, that was important to previous councils as well. They weren't in the same amount as our last one, but they were in the area of 60 million. And I just want to continue to acknowledge that support, not just from our former colleagues or, you know, past councils, but also the voters of Austin, because this is a city of Austin voters have invested in, and it's important. I even remember the one year that it went down, several of us, that the bond package went down, the only time the affordable housing bond package went down, several of us pushed for a $10 million investment from surplus funds, which was very controversial. We got lots of super angry emails, but this council, because it had just been voted down, the bond package had been voted down that fall, several of us were able to persuade on a very tight council vote, a $10 million expenditure that year. So the projects that had been hoping for and counting on bond funds were able to go forward, including a foundation communities fund. So, you know, I just, I think that the commitment to affordable housing has been there for a while. Do we have more to do? Absolutely. I would also like to encourage all of us to continue to think about ways that we can use all the tools in our toolbox, including our density bonus program, as effectively as possible, including our city-owned land, which we're doing now, thanks to the leadership of Councilmember Kassar and Councilmember Poole. We're doing that on our city-owned tracts at St. John's and at Ryan Drive. And so, you know, these are all tools that we need very much if we're going to increase the affordable housing supply.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Valencia, for joining us this morning. Hopefully, we'll have other opportunities to discuss the data. And I will encourage my colleagues, again, do take a look at the underlying data. And for the public, you can find that on our website and be able to take a look for yourself. There's several tabs, and it's really a very helpful snapshot of the data that we have to date from the census. So thank you very much.